Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome to the October 7th regular meeting of the Zion City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson? Mayor McKee?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Brimner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please do our new pledge and lead to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
Item number four, do any of the commissioners have any agenda changes?
No.
No? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell, second by Fisher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here. Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye. Motion carries forward as zip. And leading us in prayer this evening is Leo Barnes with Christ Community Church. Pastor Barnes, how are you?
I'm doing very well. How are you, Mayor?
Good to see you.
Good to see you as well. I understood you had a big sermon the other day.
Yes.
My son came home talking all about it.
All right.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this city, for the freedoms that we have here, for these leaders that serve us and give up their time to take care of so many things that we take for granted. Thank you for the beauty of our city, for the flowers, for the lakefront, for the sunsets, for all these new park facilities that are coming in and being worked on to better our community. We ask that you would enable these leaders to lead with wisdom, with integrity, with joy, with respect for one another, and with fulfillment for the job that they're doing. We pray that our city might be a place of peace and opportunity, respect and worship, a city in which you are a word of blessing, being known and being pleased. Lord, we pray that Zion would be a community ever being renewed by you, and we pray in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Barnes. Item number five is Citizens Comments. Mary Lou Hiltabrant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. During the month of September, your ESDA volunteers served 179 and 1/4 hours for a value to the city of $6,236. We assisted with the Labor Day Parade and with parking lot security for football games at the high school. We performed a monthly sirens test and held our monthly meeting. We assisted with rope closures for the cross-country run and the monthly food pantry at ZB East. We did duty times for the upkeep of the center and maintenance of the vehicles and equipment. We were pleased to accept the donation of almost 40 comes from a business that was cleaning out their warehouses and really appreciate the donation. ESDA is a volunteer group under the supervision of the Fire Chief. We always welcome new members who care about our city. Please check the city website to volunteer or ask any member you may see. Thank you for your continued support.
All right. Thank you, Mary Lou. Been a busy time.
Yep.
And I see that we have a new person that is going to be in front of Citizens Comments tonight, Yolanda James. We do have a three-minute limit, and if there's any questions, we'll answer them at another time during our department head meeting. So, Yolanda James.
Thank you so much. And my name is Yolanda James. I'm the Regional Director for Alliance Women's Clinic. And I'm very aware that we have this wonderful clinic in this great city of Zion. And we are located not too far from here at 2640 Sheridan Road. And we provide free reproductive health services for women, which includes well-woman exams, STI testing, pregnancy tests, ultrasound, prenatal care, wraparound social services, options counseling, and several care groups. So we have been diligent in trying to build relationships with other organizations in the city. And so some of those things include we've been participating in the community hub at the library to kind of get to know some of the organizations that are here and ways that we can link up with them. We have been in contact with Sherri Neal, the town of Zion Supervisor. So she came to our open house. We have also met with the Zion Family Resource Center, and so we desire to continue to link arms with them. And we've also sent them clients when our clinic have been closed. And also Kendra Helferman, who is a commissioner on the zoning and planning board, here she works with us. And so she has been helping us to make connections with the city of Zion. So Mayor McKee, she told me she's waiting for those Cubs tickets. So our hope is just to be able to service those who are in the community and make our services available. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you and welcome. And if I'm correct, you left me a voicemail message.
That is correct.
Yes. So I will get in touch with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, item number six is considered agenda.
Approval minutes of a regular meeting held on September 16th, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. Approval but not released for closed session minutes of a meeting held on September 16th, 2025 at 7:50 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Stackhouse?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye. Motion carries forward as zip.
Bills vouchers 1-5-0-0-1-4, 1-5-0-1-2-4, run on the National Bank. Total $2,186,270 and 17 cents.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move to approve bills.
Motion by Fisher and second by Stackhouse. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye. Motion carries forward as zip. Item number seven, Consider Passing Resolutions as follows. 7A Authorizing and Approving a Grant Agreement Between the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, also known as DCEO, and the City of Zion per Chief Barton.
Good evening, all Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you. Staff, I do request that we authorize and approve a grant to the State of Illinois Department of Commerce, of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, per DCEO, in the City of Zion for the 2024 CJA grant.
Is there a motion to authorize and approve this grant agreement?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Questions or comments from any of the commissioners and from also our city administrator?
What's the dollar amount? How much?
$2,011,000. Just to clarify, this is the second round of funding, the second year of the CJA funding. So this, this amount is prior, the application prior to 2.75% of the payment language when it go effect, that'll be on the third round of funding, which we still are waiting for the newest funding opportunity on for the language for that. So it's a slow process, or we're actually just in the second year, even though it's 2024. And majority of this was applied for, to go towards the fire station.
All right. Any other comments from our staff? All right. We have a motion. We had a first and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye. Motion carries forward as zip. Item number seven, B Authorizing the City of Zion to intervene in a tax exemption assessment matter concerning real property located within the City of Zion per Administrator Nabel.
Thanks, Mayor Commissioners. This relates to the City of Hope. They have, for the past two years, this will be the third year, filed for property tax exemption as an off-for-profit hospital. This allows us to intervene in those proceedings and shows that we're basically trying to play that, that application at the current level. We've been successful in the prior two years through a concerted group effort. But just to put a little perspective, they pay them about $4.6 million in property taxes to the schools, the city, the park, the library, all the taxi bodies. If they were successful in this application, the impact basically would be to shift, there's two options, basically to shift that tax burden of $4.6 million onto businesses and residents, which would be about a 10% increase in property tax bills from them not paying their share towards the, all the city services, all of our other residential businesses. Or each of the taxi bodies would have to basically reduce their levy to offset the loss of that property tax revenue, so that things would stay consistent and basically absorb that. Our share there would be about $800,000 that we would lose from, from that. So neither one of those is a good option, so we're just contesting their application for a variety of reasons. A lot of topics covered in part years, but I would rather add the approval of the intervention.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this intervention, application.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Any additional questions or comments from our commissioners?
So we're gonna need to do the full, full court press down at the county building again?
Yeah. Once we have the details on the hearing location and time and date and everything, we'll share that out. The more the mayor that come along and support the position and voice that, you know, the more has the word specifically said in the past that, you know, they've never got those many people show up, they take them that seriously to show the support in the community and fighting this. So we'll get that word out again, either in council meetings, on our social media pages, however we can, that everyone as well, you don't have to speak, you don't have to do anything, you're more than welcome to. But just to show of support of that, we just ask them to pay their fair share of property taxes, so we can allow them to.
Is there, is there a deadline that they have to have that in?
Well, they, they have to have, their filing length was the end of September. They meant that, I think they filed September 16th.
Okay.
We have a timeline to intervene, to get all our documentation, attorney preselling on that effort.
Okay.
For that. But I want to say it's pretty quick.
It's pretty quick. It's a quick turnaround, and David and our, the administrator and I, we've been successful with this before through the help of everyone here, and we will turn in this resolution tomorrow to make sure that we best our rights. This is the first board meeting after we received notice of the application.
All right. We had a first and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye. Motion carries forward as zip. Item number seven, C Authorizing and Approving a Settlement, Illinois Department of Transportation, condemnation on behalf of the City of Zion per City Attorney, James Vaselli.
The State of Illinois, by, thank you, Mr. Chair, I apologize. The State of Illinois, by and through the Illinois Department of Transportation, filed a complaint to do down approximately 209 feet of real property at or near the intersection of Route 173 and Laurel High. These matters very rarely go to trial. They are normally settled out. We are very close to settling this matter, and when we do settle it, we'll ensure that there are proper easement rights. We've been working with the new director very successfully to ensure that our rights are protected, and we have all access, even if it's necessary for our continued use of any property in there. Again, this whole matter is over 209 feet in the city, so I would ask for authorization after a settlement agreement went right, when the time comes, to resolve this litigation.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize and approve this settlement agreement?
So moved.
Motion by Stackhouse?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Any questions or comments from our commissioners? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye. Motion carries forward as zip. Item number eight, Consider Passing Ordinance as follows. Eight, Authorizing and Approving the Disposal of Surplus Property, ESDA Vehicle, per Chief Street.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. That vehicle, S2, has been replaced and reached and of useful by complete maintenance and sort of funded. If the vehicle declared surplus and sent off, the city even follow the vehicle, it's surplus property, and will be optioned in the air future. 2005, GNC Canyon, with an ending at 400.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize and approve the disposal of surplus property?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Questions or comments from the commissioners? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye. Motion carries forward as zip. Item number eight, B Authorizing and Approving the Purchase of Ammunition and Related Police Equipment in the Police Department, per Chief Barton.
Good evening, all Mayor Commissioners. Good, thank you. City of Zion Police Department requesting approval for the fiscal year 25, 26 firearms and ammunition budgets to support command and training duty requirements and certification standards. Ammunition equipment is necessary to maintain compliance with the state training mandates, departmental standards, and specialized training certifications. I won't go into all the details of the budget as you quickly read there on the memo. I'm respectfully requesting, recommend that council approve the fiscal year 25, 26 firearms ammunition budget, capital to the office, and add $1,604.2.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize and approve the purchase of ammunition and related police equipment?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Questions or comments?
I do have a question. Chief, is this, it seems to me that this is a, there's a cost increase since the last time we did this. Am I correct in that?
Well, yes. We, there's a state bid price, and I'm told that if we order it, if council approves tonight, we can get it ordered, and it'll probably say about $10,000. We'll see if safe, it's about $10,000 if we make the order timeline for the state bid deadline.
Okay.
We have to, I built the memo to reflect if we don't make that timeline, then we'll have to know it's coming here. So I wanted to make sure that we don't have to, we don't have to. This is, this is the worst case scenario.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye. Motion carries forward as zip. Item number eight, C Authorizing and Approving an Agreement with Standard and Associates, Inc., and the City of Zion for the administration of the SARDRJ promotional testing process, per Chief Barton.
Good evening, all Mayor Commissioners. Background, the City of Zion Police Department is preparing for the conduct of promotional process for the rank of SARDRJ. With your fair, valid, and professional process, the city requires the services of experience testing prior. Standard Associates, Inc., specializes in public safety and promotional exams, and has successfully conducted similar processes for the purposes throughout the life. SARDRJ reminds entering into the agreement with Standard Associates for the administration of the SARDRJ promotional testing process, the scope of services in police development, validation, administration for exam, and the assessment of all the necessary promotional process. Recommend that the City Council approve the contract between the City of Zion and Standard Associates for the SARDRJ promotional testing process, and allow that to see to be validated.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize and approve the agreement with Standard and Associates?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Questions or comments from the commissioners? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye. Motion carries forward as zip. Item number eight, D Authorizing the Conveyance of Certain Real Property, 1225, 27th Street, per Chief Barton.
Again, good evening, all Mayor Commissioners. Martha Sal is our owner of Martha's State Care Center North. At least the property located at 1225, 27th Street, the bid number ending in B, we agree to its review. Since July of 2010, it has a rate of $4 per year. The space has been utilized as a playground, shoulder to shoulder Martha's State Care Center of the door. On July 18th, 2025, the city held a bid opening of sale property. We did one responsive bid and received a report of search and learning center, any amount of $65,000. This bid was accepted by council on July 1st, 25th, by council meeting. I don't know if that's the right way. Yeah. So, I don't know when we accept a bid. But, a third is for both parties have reviewed and agreed to terms of the tax real estate contract. SARDRJ, the council consensus for, is ready to receive a settlement proposal.
All right. Here's their motion to authorize the conveyance of certain real property.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye. Motion carries forward as zip. Item number eight, E Approving an Amendment to an AIA Agreement Regarding the Construction of Fire Station Number Two, per Chief Barton.
All right. Again, good evening, all Mayor Commissioners. The City of Zion has determined that Fire Station Two is in a state of disrepair in all other means of operational needs of the Zion Fire Department. So to ensure that the department continues to provide active intervention, fire protection, and emergency response services, the City Council previously authorized construction of a new Fire Station Two. In connection with this project, the city entered into an A1A agreement with Comosia Incorporated to serve as a construction manager. Due to the uncertainty of the construction cost, it is from the search amend the agreement to establish a guaranteed maximum price for the project. SARDRJ recommends approval of this ordinance to ensure the Fire Station Number Two continues in a timely, equitable, and effective manner, allowing the fire station, Zion Fire, and rest department to meet the needs of the community. SARDRJ will proceed with all necessary actions to implement the project under a guaranteed maximum price framework. And I will note that I have representatives from Comosia Construction here, and our architect, FGM, present for any questions that we may have, and Cole, that you all see in the room and from the book.
All right. Is there a motion to approve an amendment to the AIA agreement?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Questions from our commissioners or staff members?
So this is just an amendment to the agreement?
The original, yeah.
I think we have representatives from Comosia here. Can you just refresh my memory on how, what's the mechanism for a change, for a change order to the guaranteed maximum price? How is that gonna be determined?
Sure. So if you have a change order, it would be sent through the contract, but you, as the owner, would have a chance to approve the change order before it's actually done or something like that.
So it has to be signed off by the owner?
Yes.
I just didn't, because it looked like this agreement was to address that, and I just didn't see it in the language, except for it refers back to the contract, and I didn't have the contract.
Right. Change orders need to be approved by the owner.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. And that is John Comosia, who is the president of Comosia Construction Company. Good to see you, John.
Nice to see you.
Any other questions?
We're having to walk you through the design document at this point, or do you have any questions regarding the design?
Sounds, it looks great, but yes.
If you can answer any questions.
Who's gonna walk us through the design?
She's our, she's our lead on our, on the architect's project.
So on the first page of the book, there's the exterior render at the northeast corner of the building, so that's the street facing Zion Hill Highway 173. The following pages are the exterior visions, so the beginning process we want of the platform design, hopefully you'll see in those illustrations, all of that first render. The following page is a site plan, the building closest to the road, the front and the south side is a retaining wall, and comes to wetland, so we're trying to avoid disturbing that through the process for all those items. The following page shows the first floor and west main floor plans, so this was the as well, the current of that process to the main course. And then the following series of pages are renderings throughout the building, some of these are the originals, so you'll see where we moved the interstate barrels to, again, the remaining some of the cost during the, like, change in, in the beginning of the project.
Good, Doug. My question on the, on the rendering here, is that gonna be the color of the building?
Yep. It is a red, red building.
Almost, almost like the ZB colors, right?
Yeah.
So Mayor, I'll just go, you know, working with our team, Brittany specifically, and the team at FGM and Comosia, over the past probably year long or so, we've, we've had heavy participation from the fire department and Chief Street's staff, as, because this is their quarters during, during their work hours, and they'll spend a good amount of time here, so we've got a lot of buy-in from them, and they've been very participative in the design process. And we worked diligently with FGM and Comosia to really hone down and narrowing on the price and get what we need, but not, you know, just the bare ball. We want, we want a nice facility, we want a long-lasting facility, we want something that's gonna be timeless and, and survive, you know, the next, what we're planning for 70 years or so. So it's been, it's been a long process, it's been a lot of back and forth and a lot of work on, for both of these, these companies I've been working with and our department as well. So it's, we're happy to present this to you. If there's any other questions, we'd gladly answer them, but you respectfully request the question.
Okay. I do have a question. I'm looking at the layout, and I see the wetland setback, the, the line for that crosses through the parking area, and there's no, there's no concern, and I noticed that the, there's a retaining wall. How, how high is that retaining wall?
Um, maybe that's, that's where it's, it's, and there's also a, a, so.
Okay.
The building itself is outside of the wetlands, not, so.
Right. Okay. But there's not a concern that there, there might be degradation to the parking area due to, due to settling from the wetlands or anything? Or have we accounted for that?
Yeah. That, so our civil has been working with us on that side of things. We're working with Ericson to help us negotiate and manage that side of, the south side of the property. We're also looking at, with this team, adding a heavier block retention wall, so that it's not gonna be just a smaller, I can't remember if they have a, yeah, so it's gonna be a larger concrete block that's gonna be more stable and, and longer lasting.
Yeah, that would be my concern, is that over time, that, that retaining wall might start to degrade, and then, and then we have a maintenance issue.
And then we also, with that process, there's also geofence that's gonna be incorporated into the build, the construction of that, of that buildup to, to get to the elevation we need for the parking lot. So it's well-engineered, and they go out there to make judicious workup. You know, we, we also have the detention pump that's to the west there, that area's gonna overflow and just move all the water runoff to the, to the west and itself into the wetland area, so that just will shed water away from the restructuring area and not throw away.
Okay. All right.
One thing about that setback, I think the setback line, setback line that's on there represents like a 0.5% chance of a hundred-year flood even reaching that position, so it's quite a ways back from where the, the flowing waters.
I think actually that one might be a thousand year. I think it's the thousand-year mark. There was, there was a number of them that we looked at, and there were a couple, there was a 1%, 100-year mark, and a 1%, 100-year mark, and then I think the one that brought that's a thousand year.
Yeah. I think we're getting together that 1% of the old, just, just off the 13.
Okay.
We get that a little flooding, we've got bigger issues on the parking lot.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. So in addition to the guaranteed maximum price, is there a guaranteed finish date?
We're, we're shooting for a 12-month duration from, from the time we started.
12 months? Oh, that's pretty good. And Chief Street, how long has building two been there? Because I've, I've been through it and know that it needs to be replaced.
1965, when it was constructed.
So my, my question would be, because we've had this, talking about this building and the police station two, how have the construction materials changed over the year for, over the years for more longevity with buildings?
Yeah. I mean, you're talking a 70-year plan for, we're seeing 70 longer, 80 to 100 years for this design, so I think.
So we won't, we won't be around. We won't be around. We'll know what kind of scientific, yeah, okay. I'm sure that, I'm sure there've been some changes, but yeah. All right. We had the first and the second, we had questions. Any additional questions? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll, and thank you for being here. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll, and thank you for being here.
Fisher Fisher?
Aye.
Fisher McDowell?
Aye.
Fisher Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye, motion carries for zip. Item number nine is departmental commentary, Director Eynson.
Thank you, Mayor, a few big bad ex-wholes here in the house, they're going to start programming and recording recyclables throughout the city's building, actually starting the program tomorrow, so getting subdivisions and getting funding, so we've made a checklist and checking if people are doing it correctly or incorrectly, and leaving it on the cart, so people know how the recycling is being done, and if you ever miss four weeks, I have to.
All right. Director Ransom?
Uh, two quick things. This is completed last week sometime. The other thing is that not in winter leaf season, I do want to remind everyone, there is no curb vacuuming of leaves, we do recommend that, having the brown paper bags that are designed for yard compost, or the 30 gallon garbage cans.
And will we put out a notice? I know because last year there was still a little, some confusion from some of our residents about the vacuuming program, so will we put something out again on our social media page?
We can get something to that, we did put it in a quarterly, that was just mailed out, that just was received, but we can also do that as well, yes.
Okay, all right, sounds great, thanks, Director Ransom. Chief Street?
Good evening again, Mayor Fisher, just a couple quick things, I've talked about it for a few weeks now, but this is National Fire Prevention Week, started Sunday, goes through next Sunday. The national theme this year is charge and fire safety, it's an awareness for many of the lithium ion batteries that we're seeing in homes these days, and scooters, and all kinds of things that are mishandled, cause fires, so we're trying to make awareness on that, and also continued awareness on smoke alarm safety, so again, a reminder to our residents, if you need assistance with smoke alarms or checking them, we're here to help with that. And finally, this coming Saturday is our open house, I have some flyers, nine to noon at Station One, just about a block away, these have been posted on our social media pages as well, and Mayor, I know you've been brushing up my Spanish, so we have the flyers in Spanish as well, if you want to grab one of those and help us spread the word, so Saturday, Station One, nine to noon.
El Sabato.
Right.
All right, thank you, okay, that's great, and this is Fire Prevention Week the entire week?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Chief Street, is that all?
That's all.
All right, Chief Barton?
All right, Mayor, I just want to make a statement, there's been a lot of discussion and concern in our home space about immigration and what we can do, I just want to make a statement, the Design Police Department is committed to protecting and serving all members of our community, our mission is to ensure safety, security, and trust of everyone who lives, works, and visits our city. I want to be clear, the Design Police Department is not enforced without immigration laws. Pursuant to the Illinois Trust Act, our officers do not inquire about an individual's immigration status during routine interactions, nor do we detain anyone solely based on immigration status. Immigration enforcement, immigration enforcement is a responsibility of federal agencies, such as the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or Homeland Security, not the Design Police Department.
Right, yeah, and I know there's been a lot of concern about that, there was some activity in Waukegan yesterday, and really disturbing video on Facebook where a young woman was arrested and detained, and she was released later, and she was an American citizen. So it's, it's, talking to our commissioners, Stackhouse, who is also in the school system, has talked about the reluctance of parents wanting their children to leave the school building on field trips because of what's happening, and it's a really frightening time, and we've spent some time, I spent some time talking with our state's attorney, Eric Reinhardt, yesterday, and Chief Barton, just about making sure that we have the notices out, and we have the understanding of what the laws are, because it's a frightening time right now, so thank you for the statement, Chief Barton, and if any of our commissioners have any additional questions for Chief Barton about this, you can ask him now, or I'm sure he'll, as he always does, talks with us later about those items. All right, thanks, Chief. Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor.
And good to see you back.
Thank you. My commentary tonight is actually of a personal nature, not a city, but this is my first meeting back after a health scare that I had over the past couple of months, I've been recovering from, will try and get sorted out, and I've received a lot of prayers and outreach from all the people in the community and staff here, I just want to say it was needed, and felt, and appreciated, there's a lot of support that I didn't know was out there, and to all the staff, department heads, and all the city staff, I keep the things running as I knew they would be able to while it was out, thank you to all of them as well, thank you to our fire and rescue team for quick response when I had my incident at the end of June, Chief Street went to the hospital with me, so when I woke, he was the first face I saw, and I didn't know who he was, so I appreciate professionalism and the personal care from, from all of our, our staff and our community.
All right, and happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
October 3rd, Administrator Naval turned 35?
For the 13th time.
All right, well, happy birthday, and we're glad to have you back, I know a lot of us took on some of the, your responsibilities, and trying to chip in while you were there, and just letting you know, as we, as we've told you, you have a team here, of people that you can, don't have to take the whole, we're here, we're here to help, and to ensure that the city continues to run smoothly, efficiently, professionally, and of course, giving you the extra hands you need and brain power to get things done, so good to have you back. All right.
Well, this is last weekend, Christ Community Church had a service day, so probably about 125 people went out into the community, various projects, and one of them was just picking up trash in our alleyways and in our roadways, and I kind of scoped out the project before we started, and I just wanted to make note of this, that actually the city looks pretty good. There was a time that our alleys did have a lot of trash in them, but that's not the case anymore, and even less so, because we picked whatever was up, whatever is there, we picked it up, and so our city looks nice.
Thank you for that community involvement, it makes a difference, and one of the things that Administrator Naval has set for years is the 30-minute rule, if our residents would spend 30 minutes a month, not a day, just 30 minutes a month, helping with things like picking up trash that's blowing through the city, or cleaning the leaves off of the grates so that we don't have flooding in the streets, and you're, just taking your block and doing that, cleaning up the fire hydrants, removing the snow during the wintertime, so that if there is an incident that the fire department can get there and take your visit and save the, the home, 30 minutes a month, we have 20, almost 25,000 residents, and if people chip in with that, it will continue to help beautify our, our city. And one of the things, I had some friends in, some high school friends in over the weekend, my high school coach, a lot of people had come back to Zion for an event that was held at the high school, and one of the things that they remarked is how good the city looks, so thank you to the building department, our public works department, and everyone, our residents that have been chipping in to help make sure that our, in our Park District, for making sure that our city looks presentable and great when people come to town. Commissioner Stackhouse?
I would just like to invite everyone to come to Oktoberfest, it's going to be Saturday, October 18th, you can enjoy a hayride and a marshmallow, there'll be vendors and food trucks, so I just want to invite everyone to come out and have some fun, it's a community event for Zion, I mean, each part, everybody's welcome, you don't have to live in Zion, but it's just a community event for Zion, just to piggyback to Commissioner McDowell, it takes all of us to make our city beautiful, and that is really commendable, what you did to go out and do that, I remember doing that too, with some children, and complained and fussed, but we did it, so I do, and I just want to, I hope to see some of these familiar faces at Oktoberfest, it's a good time, we have lots of fun.
So what year is this for Oktoberfest, is it second, is the fourth year?
Fourth year, one year we got rained out, just can't control the weather, but I am praying for good weather, so all of you people in here that believe in prayer, be in agreement with me, and we will have nice weather on October 18th.
And it's from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., right across the street from West School, a really nice event, and the first year we had it was the first year that I'd ever gone on a hayride, that I'd wanted to go for years, and it was great. A lot of food out there, of course, there's fires to keep everybody warm, but it was a nice turnout from our residents, so this is the fourth year at 5:00 to 8:00, you've got all kind of arts and crafts out there, and good food, and good people, a good time, again, there's been so many events throughout the city, go over to summer, the Park District and the Coalition for Health and Community have put together that our residents can get together and enjoy each other's company, it's a great, one of the great things about our community. All right, thanks for putting that together, again, Commissioner Stackhouse. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I just want to note that last Friday, I participated in a ribbon cutting ceremony for Dada Soul Restaurant, they just moved into a location right over here on Sheridan Road, just to give a boost to a local business that is owned by people who live here in Zion, you know, their children go to Zion schools, they're very involved in the community, and it's a real pleasure to, to see them start off, they've been here in Zion for a number of years, but to see them start in a new and bigger space, and so we want to wish them the best of luck, and I want to encourage everyone to shop local.
Yeah, it's a, and they have great food, they were located on 173 and Elisha at one point, and the only negative I would say about the business, they just didn't have enough seating for you could go in and sit down and eat, and now, with their new location, which is right downtown Zion, you can go in and sit in and have a great meal, so.
And they do have carryout, they have a carryout setup, so you can just park on the backside, just walk in and pick up your food right there.
Yeah, well, thanks very much. They, they took over Hughes Place.
Oh, we took over Hughes Place.
Yeah. Hughes elected to go out of business, and Dada Soul work out a rental agreement with the owners of the building, and they were able to get in, and so that's a great spot right down from City Hall.
Yeah.
Another, another nice lunch spot for downtown Zion.
Just walk right over there.
Yeah. Attorney Viselli, any, any comments?
Um.
That our public can hear.
It is nice to have Administrator Naval back, other than that, have a very nice Halloween if I don't see everyone, that's all I have.
All right, my only comment tonight, just kind of piggybacking on what Chief Barton was talking about with ICE and the federal agents being in the area, one of the greatest things that I saw that happened yesterday was the care of people in the city of Waukegan and Lake County when this event happened, and last night's city council meeting at the city of Waukegan was jam-packed with residents that were supportive of one another, and it's indicative of this area, this northeast corner of the state of Illinois, where we have a lot of pride in our communities, and we've been successful because we've stood together, and that's what we have to do as we go through this difficult time, we have to be smart about our responses, much like when you're talking to our officers, you have to be respectful, but also knowing your rights, and Congressman Snyder put out a, a notice, a bulletin about knowing your rights, I would like for us to put that on our city Facebook page, I put it on my personal Facebook page, because so many of our residents will look at the things from our personal Facebook pages, of course, there were some comments that I received from people that have the wrong take on what this immigration policy is about, and I don't engage in political debates on Facebook, because when people have different opinions, it does not go well, but we want everyone to be treated with respect, you're in the United States of America, and we are all Americans, and this is a, has been a melting pot for years, and one of the things that I am proud of about our city, and I was talking to Commissioner McDowell, and Commissioner Fisher, Commissioner Stackhouse before, is our city has been insulated from a lot over the years, and we have a very caring population of people, and I know if it comes to that, which we hope that it doesn't, that we will continue to stand in solidarity in, in supporting our residents, no one deserves to be treated in a disrespectful manner, regardless of their race, creed, color, nationality, or religion. With that being said, I'm going to move on to item number 10, which is announcements, again, on October 11th, from 9:00 to noon, there's an open house at the Firehouse, again, I always think about my days as a young man, trying to go over there and plan the fire trucks, and of course, the last time I was there, just being able to meet with the mascot, and going, what's the bar that you can slide down?
Fire pole?
The fire pole, and sliding down the fire pole, I think that was probably about six years ago, and I didn't break anything, so I'll probably try to do that again.
I didn't, I didn't see the fire pole here, where's?
One story.
Darn it, eliminates that, huh? No sliding anymore, huh? All right, so that's October 11th, 9:00 to noon, and then October 18th, again, Oktoberfest, a great event for our community, and October 21st, at 6:00, right here at Zion City Hall, there's going to be a Zion Township Board Meeting, followed at 7:00 by Zion City Council Meeting, then on October 26th, we have from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., Zion Trick or Treating, so that's always been a big event here, it's changed over the years for safety, for the kids, I remember we used to do it in the evenings, which was a lot of fun, but now it's in the daylight hours, 2:00 to 5:00, if people want to participate, turn your lights on, or put some decorations out to let people know that you are handing out candy, and then on, that's 2:00 to 5:00 on October 26th, Zion Trick or Treating, and then October 31st, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., we have our Zion Park District Trail of Treats at Shiloh Park, and I know we'll have a booth there, and for the last several years since I've been mayor or commissioner, that we've always, most of us have shown up in some kind of costume.
He's looking at me quietly.
Yeah, all right, I'm looking for an amen, can we get an amen? But that's a, it's a fun time for our residents, and I know that people come from the other communities, they get an opportunity to drive through Shiloh Park, and if you haven't had a chance, most of us have driven past Shiloh Park and look at the terrific work that is done there, and one of the refreshing things that I've seen is how much use the Park District is getting now, that they have new equipment there, new basketball courts, tennis courts, pickleball courts, and even an outside table tennis setup, and what is it, cornhole, they've got a place for, for cornhole as well, so it's a, a great time for, to be out, get there early, it's only for a couple of hours, and you can see how well the Park District will decorate the park and, and welcome people. Item number 11 is closed session pursuant to 5IL CS 120-2, open meetings for the discussion of threatened and or probable or imminent litigation collective bargaining, purchase or sale of real estate, legal counsel, and personnel, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Motion by Stackhouse, second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Fisher Fisher?
Aye.
Fisher McDowell?
Aye.
Fisher Stackhouse?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank everybody for coming out tonight, and there won't be any action taken after closed session, so have a good evening and drive safely.